Good evening. Welcome to the South River Mayor and Borough Council Meeting Number 13, held today on August 21st, 2023. This meeting is hereby called to order. Save in a publication. Madam Clerk?
In compliance with Chapter 231 of Public Law of 1975, notice of this meeting to be held in the Criminal Justice Building, 61 Main Street, South River, or remotely via Zoom has been published in the Home News Tribune on January 6th, 2023, posted on the municipal building bulletin board, the Borough website, and the front door of the Criminal Justice Building at 61 Main Street, South River.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mayor Krenzel?
Here.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Here.
Councilman Gindy?
Here.
Councilman Gortenski? Councilwoman Mira?
Yeah.
Councilman Olivera?
Here.
Council President Seula?
Here.
Thank you. Please stand for the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. Please be seated. There are no proclamations, honors, or presentations, nothing in the agenda session, so we'll go right into our ordinance, second reading, public hearing, ordinance 2023-24. Madam Clerk?
Ordinance 2023-24, an ordinance to amend the code of the Borough of South River, Chapter 193, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, by amending Section 193-31.1, Schedule 2A, Handicap Parking thereof.
Make a motion to waive the full reading.
Second.
Motion has been made to waive the full reading by Councilman Seula, seconded by Councilwoman Ballas. All in favor?
Aye.
All against? The ayes have it. Excuse me. The, um, we'll open this up to the public. Anyone who wishes to make any comments concerning this ordinance may come forward now. Please give your name and address on first call, second call, third call.
Motion to close.
Motion to close by Mr. Gindy, seconded by Mrs. Ballas. All in favor?
Aye.
All against? The ayes have it. Your pleasure on the ordinance.
Motion to move the consent resolution.
Second.
I believe Mr. Gindy has moved the ordinance, seconded by Mrs. Ballas. Discussion? Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gindy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
Council President Seula?
Yes.
The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 2023-25?
Ordinance 2023-25, an ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River, so as to amend Chapter 72, entitled Public Safety Department of.
Make a motion to waive the full reading.
Second.
Motion has been made to waive the full reading by Mr. Seula, seconded by Mr. Olivera. All in favor?
Aye.
All against? The ayes have it. Opening this up to the public. You may come forward, give your name and address. You may ask any questions or make any comments on first call, second call, third call. Motion has been made to close by Mrs. Ballas, seconded by Mr. Seula. All in favor?
Aye.
All against? The ayes have it. Your pleasure on the ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
The ordinance has been moved by Mrs. Ballas.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Olivera. Discussion?
I just had a quick question, Mr. Mayor. What was being changed on this?
We don't have Mr. Gortenski here.
So this was, I think, uh, he was switching from one mile to ten, yeah.
Um, the answer is the residency for regular fired- firemen, uh, not going to have any boundaries. They could, they can be from anywhere, but to be an officer in the fire department, you have to live within 10 miles.
Okay. Cause before it was, you'd have to live within 10 miles.
For regular members.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gindy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
Council President Seula?
Yes.
Thank you. The ordinance has been adopted. Moving on to reports. Good evening, Mr. Koch.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the 2022 Local Aid Program, that was the road project, uh, the DOT has given us authorization to close that out, so we've been in touch with the contractor to get that paperwork going. The 23 Local Aid Program grant application and the 2023 Local Transportation Projects Grants are both submitted. Uh, we'll have to wait probably till later in the year to get answers regarding those. Um, the 2024, we applied for as well. Uh, the electrical substation maintenance, working on the bid documents, uh, and we'll put that out to bid for you. The water treatment plant, there's a resolution on your agenda to close that out, and I'll remove it from the report. And the DAP Stormwater Assistance Grant Application, we're scheduling the survey work for this year's portion of the project.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Koch? Hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Zenga.
Yes, Mayor, one item on the agenda. There's a resolution to include, uh, three additional grants in the budget, uh, an assisted transportation grant for the Office on Aging, Inferean Assistant Grant for the Office on Aging, and a lead grant assisted program. So, that's on for approval.
Anything else? No? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Zenga. Mr. Suarez?
We had the, uh, water main break on David Street repaired today, so that is done. Uh, the road department started painting the crossing guard posts for the upcoming school year. We should be done by school time. And also, we will be closed Monday, September 4th, for Labor Day. There will be no yard waste pickup for that day. That's all I have, Mayor.
Very good. Any questions?
I do, Adriano. Um, the Mexican flag raising that they're doing for, uh, September 10th, the organizer of that event had reached out to me because they purchased a large banner that they wanted to put at Daley's Pond, um, just to be able to do before the event so that people knew the time and where their event was gonna take place. I was wondering, Mayor, would that be possible for DPW to put that up at Daley's Pond for them? They purchased like a-
I can't see why not, but my only thought is, where?
Well, the, the guy had an idea of where it would fit.
Put it on the fence.
Uh, he says it's a 12-foot by 4-foot banner.
Well, that could be on the fence then.
Yeah.
We'll throw it on the fence, going up prospect.
Could I give him a contact for you, just so that, um, you guys can meet up together and, and discuss that then? I just wanted to bring that up. Cause I know, uh, the flag raising is only September 10th, but they wanted to put it up by the end of this month, if that's okay?
Okay. No problem.
Okay.
Chief?
Mayor, the only thing I have for the, this evening is, uh, Resolution 165, which is the, uh, authorizing the promotion of Bernie McHill to the position of Lieutenant. Uh, ever since Lieutenant Kacharsky announces retirement, uh, Bernie McHill was appointed to the position of Acting Lieutenant. So this is just to, uh, make it permanent, uh, cause as of September 1st, uh, Lieutenant Kacharsky will be formally retired and off the books.
Okay.
All right. And other than that, the only thing I have is, remember, school's gonna be starting in September, that first week, September 7th, so just remind everyone just to be safe out there and watch all the kids out there. And we're still, uh, looking for a crossing guard, so if anybody's interested, anybody up on the dais, doesn't have a job that wants to work as a crossing guard, please let me know.
All right. Thank you. Come on in, people. You got? Come on, come on, come on. You could sit on the end there. That, you got there? You're gonna be there? Okay, good. We're gonna go into public comments in a little while, so, uh, hang in there. First, we're doing reports right now. Uh, to the clerk, anything there? Okay.
I don't have anything.
All right then. Our business administrator?
Thank you, Mayor. A few things, um, for the council's edification. Mr. Donato, the crosswalk on Samuel Drive has been repaired, uh, and is in working order. For Councilwoman Mira, I got a response from Milltown that they're not interested in inter-local agreement for swimming. They have, um, prices for out-of-towners already in an ordinance. I didn't get a response from East Brunswick at all. Um, as to the, uh, report on the target area, the engineer is going to be at the next council meeting on the 12th. Uh, they are still analyzing the issues after the fire where we used 5.3 million gallons of water. It seemed to clean out a lot of the, the water. They're just looking for that answer of why that happened in a hydraulic model. And as I said, the, his report should be to us by the end of next week, and he and the operator of the plant will be at our next meeting. Um, that is all I have. Just, uh, a word, Chief, the milling of Main from John to Ferry will be starting?
August 25th.
Friday, for everybody's edification. The county's gonna be milling Main Street from John Street to Ferry Street.
Aren't they taking up the, uh?
Yeah, but they're still gonna pave it. Then they're gonna rip it up.
Okay.
Yep. That's all I have.
Okay. Anything for our business administrator? Okay. Uh, we'll start off with Mr. Gindy. Anything to, uh, report?
I have nothing to report tonight.
Okay, Mrs. Ballas?
Uh, the only thing I have is, due to lack of participation, the Frost on the Pumpkin Race is canceled. They've only gotten one person to register, so we'll try it again next year and see what happens.
That's, do they normally have people earlier, or?
Yeah, cause everything's online, and we usually have the, the racing teams from all over. If that wanna do it, then nobody wants to participate. Whether it's because we haven't had one in such a while, they found other places to do it.
Hmm.
So, we'll see what happens next year, but not this year.
Fine tradition gone. Okay. Uh, Mr. Seula?
Uh, still on a summer schedule, Mayor, so I have nothing to report.
Okay. Mr. Olivera?
Yeah, just Fall Sports for Parks and Rec is now open. We'll have, uh, basketball fundamentals, tennis, and fall baseball. Just wanna thank Terry and Jessica for, uh, coordinating and organizing the end of summer fireworks. I thought it went really well. Uh, Summer Rec is finally over. Huge shout out to them again, but also wanna give a shout out to our high school students that worked the, uh, um, the summer camp. Without them, it's not possible. Um, and once again, the students, you know, really enjoyed being at the high school, so we continue to grow and develop, um, grow and expand on our offerings, and we look forward to continuing to get better. So if there's any feedback that you guys have in terms of Summer Rec or sports that you would like to see, please let Terry or Jessica know, and we'll be more than happy to take that in consideration when we're planning. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the library is still having summer events. Um, I know one of the ones that they're having this week is Wednesday at 2:00 PM. It's a foam party for the little kids, so if you guys have nothing to do today and have little ones at home on Wednesday, stop by the library. They definitely have, um, a lot going on. Um, I do wanna mention, I know the, um, the Human Relations Commission isn't my commission, but, uh, people from the organizations from the previous year did reach out to me. Uh, that's why I wanna thank you guys for putting on tonight's consent resolution, that the Mexican flag raising will be held on September 10th at 12:00 PM, and also the Hondorian flag raising will be held on September 30th at 12:00 PM at Daley's Pond. Um, other than that, I wanna say our, um, uh, Environmental Shade Tree Commission has been reaching out with Saraville, and they're hoping to do a collaboration next year with them for Earth Day, April 2024. So, um, hopefully their meeting with Saraville last week went well, and I'll know more about it later. They are also reaching out to residents who are interested in having a, um, a tree planted in the verge in front of their home, so, um, they're looking to do that this fall. So if you guys are interested in planting a tree in front of your home, uh, please reach out to the Shade Tree Commission. Uh, they're trying to get their list ready for the fall. That's all I have for now, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Just as was mentioned in the BA's report, our next meeting is not gonna be on Monday, the 11th. Because of the ceremonies that'll be taking place, we've moved it to 7 o'clock on Tuesday, the 12th. So our next meeting will be on Tuesday, the 12th, and you heard our special guest will be the, uh, uh, expert as to our water. So, okay, we are now going to open it up to the public. Please give your name and address. You'll have 10 minutes to, uh, talk. Would you like to go first? Okay, come up, talk into the microphone.
Sure.
Buenas tardes, señor John Krenzel. Mi nombre es Brenda Gonzalez. Yo vengo acompañando a la familia de nuestro fallecido Brian Barbosa. Represento a Luis Barbosa y Ana Cristina Teodoro Barbosa. Estamos aquí hoy para agradecerle las atenciones que el Borro de South River y toda la comunidad nos han dado ante la lamentable fallecimiento.
Okay, so, good evening, Mayor Krenzel. Her name is Brenda. She's here representing the parents of Brian Barbosa, uh, both Louis and Ana Cristina, um, reg- and Louis, yes, uh, regarding, you know, the past tragedy that happened last month.
Nosotros hemos venido a esterilizar nuestro agradecimiento y también hacer una petición cordial para comenzar una campaña vial en memoria de Brian Barbosa.
Okay, so, they're here in gratitude to express their thank you for everything that's happened, as well as also petition cordially, um, to do a campaign within the community, uh, in Brian's name.
Estamos conscientes que es su responsabilidad de todas las personas que vivimos en South River, de garantizar la seguridad de todas las personas que transitan en nuestra comunidad.
We're conscious that, um, it is everyone's responsibility within this community, uh, to be aware of the transportation and likelihood of our children and pedestrians here in town.
Nosotros estamos confiados en Dios y sabemos que toda vida es valiosa. Por eso queremos participar en memoria de Brian para formar parte de esta campaña vial.
We're conscious that every life is valuable, and that's why we are here, um, grateful with God to, um, assist in this campaign for Brian.
Queremos invitar a comercios, iglesias, escuelas, vecinos y todos los miembros de nuestra comunidad a ser partícipes de esta campaña, a todas las personas que caminan o guían vehículos móviles en esta comunidad como residentes y visitantes.
We wanna reach out to businesses, schools, members of the community, all of, uh, the residents here in town who both walk and drive, or use any type of transport here in town.
Yo represento esta tarde a la familia Barbosa puesto que el lamentable suceso de la pérdida de Brian nos ha llenado de dolor a la comunidad y para la familia. Es bastante difícil hablar de este momento en este momento.
She's here to represent the parents of Brian. As we know, in such a tragedy, it's very difficult to, um, emotionally represent or speak on their behalf, so she, that's why she's here today.
Le quiero dar las gracias por su atención.
She wants to thank you for your attention.
Por favor. What exactly do you want to do?
¿Cuál es la campaña que usted quiere hacer?
Okay, a nosotros nos dieron referencia tras el suceso trágico que le arrebató la vida a Brian. De un acontecimiento en el pasado en Saraville, en memoria de Sarita se ha hecho una campaña donde piden a la comunidad específicamente.
Okay, so, they're referring to, um, this tragedy is similar to a tragedy that happened in Saraville. I don't know if you guys remember Sarah, it was with drunk driving. It became like Sarah's Law.
Hmm. The signs are still up there, I guess.
Uh, signs donde se pide que se reduzca el speed limit en los vecindarios por cuidado por los vecinos.
The signs that ask people to slow down, uh, for Sarah, those, that type of campaign for speeding.
También estamos consciente y nos damos cuenta cómo ha cambiado el curso en la vida de South River y de la alta velocidad en que muchas personas conducen en las calles centrales a la Main Street, Jackson Street, Over Street.
There, she's conscious also in the way that, um, times have changed in our town, and the speeding in Jackson Street, Main Street, and, uh, Main Streets like that has changed and has gotten worse.
Estamos conscientes que todos somos responsables tanto los que caminamos como los que conducen y que todos podemos aportar a que esto sea para beneficio de la seguridad de los residentes.
Uh, she's also aware and conscious that, um, it is everyone's responsibility, both the driver, the pedestrian, anybody out on the road, to be more conscious with their surroundings.
Very true. Uh, business administrator in chief, if you could give her your cards, um, the chief of police and our business administrator, if you could keep them, uh, tell them what you've been doing, and they can help you in any way that, uh, the town can help you in this endeavor.
Uh, le voy a dar el contacto del administrador, también al chief de policía, para hablar más con qué ustedes están haciendo y cómo quieren continuar a hacer las cosas.
Le agradezco mucho su atención.
Got it.
Did you guys schedule a meeting? No. There was discussion of, of scheduling a meeting within the community and the Police Department already. Um, hopefully, if you wanna do that tonight, or pick a time. Oh, that's the 28th. That's what I'm saying. Okay.
Very good. Thank you. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. And is there anyone else to come today to speak on first call? Yes.
Ford, 84 Ferrer Street. Um, I was here last month, and I presented some items to the council, and then I repeated with an email. So I was just looking to get some follow-up on it. I mean, I know Peter responded, Jason responded, and Julie responded a little bit about it, but I didn't hear anything from anybody else other than it was forwarded to, uh, the business administrator.
Okay.
For each department.
What were your questions?
Uh, one was noise, one was the commercial vehicles, um, tree service, um, unprofessional behavior by employees of the town. Um, I then kept something not in public spotlight as an example, not geared towards that person, but then that person proceeded to come to my house.
Hmm.
And I didn't answer the door, but I liked it. And I didn't appreciate that because it was geared towards you, and somehow this person felt it was me and came to my door. And to me, that's unacceptable to have happen. It's not like I even talked to the person, but they showed up at my door. Then, they stopped in the street and didn't get out of the car, but we had a conversation, and I let it at that, let him continue. But I just felt that it wasn't appropriate for that to have to happen. Um...
Okay, I was not here, then I will ask the business administrator, do you have anything to report on his questions? Uh...
Some of the personnel matter, which I cannot discuss, and the rest I turned over to the department heads, um, to respond.
Okay.
Trees you're talking about?
What's that?
Those branches you're talking about? The ones hanging over?
Which tree? Where's that at?
Michael.
That's at the turn?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that one, that was an example?
Yeah, I showed that to age, so.
Yeah, 91 Ferrer Street was another. They started cutting it and stopped. Um, in the middle of Virginia Street, there's a branch that's maybe 10 feet high from the ground, in the middle of the road, and I'm just like, preventative to take care of that.
Let's go down the line. Mr. Suarez, do you have anything to report on these cutting of the trees?
Yeah, I saw a part of it. Some of it's still overhanging the wires.
That branch is still on? And the other one we're speaking about was two branches that were dead.
Well, like, you see the trees on the corner?
Yeah.
Is that what you're talking about? Cause I didn't see anything cut there.
No, that one.
That's on the path.
That's Ballas just showed me that.
Yeah, and then when you drive down Virginia Street, it's right in the middle of the street. It's about 10 feet from the ground. It's a branch that's, big branch that's hanging there, and I'm like...
We don't, you know, we didn't- Same thing, just call the office and report it, and we'll take care of it.
So that was my question. What is, what, are we supposed to just call in every time we see something? Nobody does preventative, like, maintenance when they're walking around town, making note of it as they drive through?
You don't drive around the chain itself, though.
No, no, but I'm just saying, there's garbage trucks, there's Department of Public Works, there's the Electric Department, they're all driving around town. They should see this and make note and say, hey, we gotta take care of that. And, you know, like that tree that's hanging 10 feet, that's been there for a long time. That's not something that-
And where is that?
On Virginia Street.
On Virginia Street?
Yep. At the bottom of the hill, when you start going straight towards, um, say, Colfax, Cleveland. It's like, right in the middle of the street, it's probably about 10 feet high. If a truck goes down it, he's either gonna hit it and rip it down, or maybe avoid it and create a problem. That's why I'm bringing it up. I'm try, I'm trying to be proactive and say, hey, you got these dead branches, and if they take, they fall, they could take down wires, you know? So it's like preventative maintenance type thing.
On your way to work tomorrow, you know where to look. Okay. Okay, so, people need to complain about, uh, branches over their wires, live or dead, and also that the, uh, workers, as they drive around, see it, will complain, you know, they'll report it there. Okay.
Right, yeah, that's what I was trying to find out. Is that some, you know, operation? How does that work? And is it up to the public to just walk around and call in everything they see, or should people be making note of it and be, being proactive on it?
They should be proactive. Yeah, okay, all right.
And that's one of my other things, was the commercial vehicles parked all over the place. Um, you know, not supposed to be there after hours, um, see them all over the place after hours. Sometimes it's a trailer, like, I took a picture of my neighbor, and one night he had a big trailer. He just parked it, left it overnight. The next night he came by with a trailer and a big, uh, Tark machine in the back of the trailer, just sitting there in the middle of the road all night. Roads are patrolled, at least I thought. I shouldn't have to tell you, hey, knock on that door until the guy moves the truck. It doesn't belong here. But, that's what I see, you know? Pickup trucks with diesel tanks all over the roads, dooleys right down the road here, Thomas Street. Sometimes you can't even see until you're halfway across the street. And I shouldn't have to call in and say, hey, you know, this doesn't belong here, you know? Sometimes that guy parks on the sidewalk, so. That's my thing, is, again, is that something that should be called in on every vehicle? Is there proactivity going on? Should somebody be just, like, kinda doing their job and saying, hey?
If it's more than once or twice?
All the time. All the time.
You should call in.
Every single vehicle?
Yes.
All right, cause that was my question, gonna be, you know, I could call in, I could drive around tonight and hand you 50 cars. Is that what you want me to do, or you want me to say, hey, can you just come around a sec and take a look and see what you see and report that and do something?
Whatever you see is fine.
Okay, so, um...
Okay.
One of the other issues was, we did talk to people at Public Works, the Department of Public Works at the county, and confirmed that, yes, they are responsible for the wastewater system and the county roads. That means manholes, catch basins, piping itself. So, anything we need to do or have done, we need to go to them about and say, hey, look, we got catch basins backing up, we need the sewer lines cleaned out, we need something, but we need to be proactive and, and work with them, not just point fingers at them. Um, I know there was mention of they're gonna mill Main Street, and then who was gonna rip it up? They were gonna rip it back up?
Yes, there's, the old trolley tracks are still underneath it, so the idea was, they were going to rip out them and then repave, but apparently they're gonna repave, and someday, I guess, you know, redo it, because we're heading into the fall and winter.
Right.
You can't do it, so they'll pave it, and then they'll, uh, someday do it. I mean, once it's paved, it'll be good for two or three years, and then they'll, sometime in the future, take care of that.
Yeah, the gentleman we spoke to didn't have it on our calendar to rip up the road for anything, other than to mill.
Hmm.
But they gave us information of people to contact that are higher up to reach out to them, so we're in the process of doing that, to get information, um, to see what their plans are, when they plan on doing it, and if there's anything else they're in charge of doing that they should be doing here. Cause we have some county roads here, and work needs to be done on all of them, so it should be full in their lap. Because we have some county roads here and work needs to be done on all of them, so it should be full in their lap and not ours, so. And, you know, that's one of the things I want to touch base on, you know, find out who's in charge of what, who's doing what. And we have the Waste Water Management Grant to update the drawings, which should include where our wastewater management system ties into the county lines. If it's not there, it needs to be put there. If it's already there, that's great. We just need to point it out so that the county can do their thing and we can do our thing. And one of the things they did say was that if there is work to be done on any of the county roads, they wanted to work with the town to get it done, true or false, I don't know. But as part of the South River Downtown Alliance, that's what we're here for, to communicate back with them and make sure that we're on top of things with them and that we're aware of what they're doing so that we can get things done properly, not like, let's pave the road and then rip it back up and repave it again. That's a waste of taxpayer dollars, you know? And every, right now, the way things are, every, every dollar counts for everybody coming out of their pocket. So those are some of the items that we have with any deal. So, and then again, I'm just looking to hear back from any other issues that was sent out to the business administrator for things. Oh, and I do appreciate, I think it was Alyssa, sent me a list of grants that I requested, what grants were written, because as the Downtown Alliance, we're going to write for grants, so we didn't want to overlap and write for the same type of grants, so there's no issue there. And I did respond to it just to see who might it be so we could talk to them, but, you know, I'm not sure how that goes or who we need to talk to to get that information. So if we can get that, that would be great, so we know who to communicate with on, who's already writing grants to see what their plan is, how they do it, and how we can help them. So, because as part of the alliance, that's what we're here for, work with everybody here, work with all the different committees. We had some ideas. We got to go to the green team and see what they, what they, their thoughts are. Come to the development, come to the council and say, hey, this one, some of the ideas we want to do right now while we're waiting for things to transpire.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Anyone else on first call?
Savator Cuchillo, 104 Oberst Turnpike. Last year, back in March, I came up to you guys and asked about the infrastructure plan, about our pipes getting them relined or anything. Has there been a proposal put together to find out what it would cost? Because it's not something I know the whole town can be done at once. It's going to take parts of town. I know another town spots where their mill town redid their whole town and it took them five years. Do you guys have a plan to put a proposal together for that to find out what it's going to cost to start it? Because we spent, you guys just spent $2 million on new meters and you fixed water filtration, but it's not fixing the problem. Everybody says there's no problem with the water up here. You guys have said it in the past. There's a problem with the water. Pipes are over 100 years old. People are still having problems. There's a water main break every week in town. What, what's your guys' plan for the future? Do you just going to let the pipes keep going to their unfixable? Or are you guys going to have a proposal for the future and fix the stuff or just leave it how it is?
Something is being done. As a matter of fact, you may not have heard it, but at our next meeting, bring your questions there.
Okay.
Because there's going to be a report as to what is going on in the northeast, northwest corner of town.
Okay.
Because they've been studying that as to why, after everything that we have done, do they still have not clear water?
I would say the pipes are old.
Well, that could be one reason, but there has to be other reasons than that.
Okay.
I mean, they've been, you know, scoured, cleaned, fire hydrants on. Why does it continue to be? And why in just that area?
I know it's just not area. We, I mean, we all know it's not just one area. The whole town is having a problem. I mean, we have a fire and you guys use the, the fire hoses or whatever, you use the, and then everybody gets brown water.
Right.
That's not normal. That's definitely not normal. It's not the fact that we're not circling the stuff. It's not normal. People should, I mean, I got it older in my house, in my bathtub. Every time I turn it on and my toilet has a ring around it. It has a chemical odor to it. It's, it's been like that now for the past four years since all the work has been done. This is an ongoing problem. I believe this was discussed back in 2019 about, actually, Mr. Crenzo, you actually talked to Mr. Gindi about replacing the water system. What happened in four years? Has it, we forgotten about it? Or is it just now where you're doing something four years later?
No, it's been slowly working on it since we've been working at the main area and our pumps and our wells, taking care of that. Now it's time to look at the rest of the town.
Okay.
And where in that rest of the town would be in the northwest corner.
Okay, it's been also brought in the past, the pipes have to be relined or replaced. Why hasn't there been a proposal put together for that to figure out what it would really cost? Not just saying, well, Bruce said it would cost X amount, millions then. Why isn't there a real proposal?
Because it's going to cost millions and millions of dollars to do.
So we're just going to let everything just keep happening?
No.
That's my question. You guys say you're going to do one thing and it's not happening. And you got a lot of residents that don't report it because they know nothing gets done. And that's the problem. Nothing gets done. The other question, Volunteers Park, why was the equipment replaced during the summer? Was there a reason for that?
Dangerous. It was ruled dangerous and not safe for the children to use.
When did we get the equipment in?
Which equipment?
The new equipment that was been replaced.
For Volunteers Park?
Yes.
There is a new.
What new equipment was put into place? Has there anything been replaced yet?
In Volunteers Park? No.
Okay. What's the plan for that? Do we have new equipment yet?
Look at it next year's budget.
Okay. That's all I have.
Again, first call, second call? No, no, that's why I went, I started over there because I figured you two are going to be last.
Good evening, Mayor Crenzo, council members and the crew. No disrespect when I say that. Thank you about the, I was the one, I worked for the county in Middlesex. I was the one that was reported, the two sites actually, on, one on the site with Dare Samuel and the other one further in town by the Senior Citizen Center. Did you get, did you get my email on that as well?
I have to get a quote for a whole new unit. It appears that a vehicle took it out and it needs to be replaced completely. There's nothing left.
Did they ever find out who that was to?
No, it was a hit and run. I'm getting a quote for a new unit. Then depending on if they're a state contractor, co-op, we can do without going out for bid. If it exceeds, doesn't exceed 17.5, I could just get quotes. But I, I haven't gotten back from the company yet. When the tech, without, I showed them where it is, the footings and the bolts are still in place, but we would need to replace the whole unit with the solar panel.
Right, and the unit across the street?
Right.
I examined them.
Same thing.
Something's wrong with that one too, because you press the button, the light goes on, off, and that's it.
Yeah, I have to replace.
I can't run across the street that fast.
And those three are tied in or the two that cross are tied in up the hill and that one starts flashing when they start flashing.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense.
So, is it the wiring issue? Hopefully the wire?
Are they wired? Hardwired? It looks like they have.
Hardwired. Hardwired.
They have signals.
The wires are coming up through the.
Antennas for.
I don't know.
Aren't they connected with antennas?
Some years ago, but I think it's a combination. I do think their radio, they speak to each other by radio as well.
Okay, okay.
I think.
Yeah, because I, I know on the plans it showed that the antennas on the units.
The wiring may be for the power, even though it's solar, the solar has to charge. And if the batteries go bad, maybe it's a ride over. It was from 1998?
2006, I think it was, somewhere around there.
There was two phases, if I remember correctly. Like I said, it's been some time ago. I sent you the plans.
Yes, you did. Thank you.
Four, two, or five?
Yeah. Yeah, I know it was around, somewhere, somewhere around that area. Now, the, the site distance on the one by.
Branches, first of all, the gentleman who gave me never replied to me. I wanted to verify, he's talking about the branches in East Brunswick?
Yes.
We cannot send South River employees to cut branches in East Brunswick. I asked him if he reached out to East Brunswick. On my voicemail, he has not responded back.
Okay, yeah, I did call him up to follow up with him. He's got the opportunity.
We would have.
But since he, he reported it to us, we have an obligation to make sure that that stuff is taken care of, so you have to reach out.
If he didn't call up Old East Brunswick, but I don't want duplicate effort, so.
Yeah, usually when it's designed, it's designed for a clear site distance, so that really needs to be maintained. Otherwise, they, they get it at the first signal.
And those trees are from private property, I believe.
Part of them are, part of them aren't, because the, the property line is further back and I believe there's a fence that goes, looks like it goes across the property line and on top of that, there's an eight-foot wide roadway easement. So if the borough went in there, if the borough decided to take that on and do it, I think.
That'd be in East.
Reaching out to East Brunswick could be the first step.
It's probably an East Brunswick easement.
No, it's county easement.
Well, it's a county easement. Why didn't the county come in and trim it?
It's not our facility, it's yours.
No comment.
That's true.
It could help out.
I think they have, but I don't know that for a fact and, I mean, I'll go out there and do it myself if you want.
No, I wouldn't.
Well, I'm confused.
Recommend you going on somebody else's property.
So the light is a borough facility, therefore the borough has to take care of it.
Right.
But the trees is in the county easement, so the county would have to be concerned with it? Then why are we talking about East Brunswick?
There is no easement, there is no easement there for site. There was no site distance easement there that could be enforced, so probably, and council will know better than me, you'd have to go to the property owner, depending on what requirements are for the property owners to maintain those areas and then go from there. But.
So the trees.
If you could do it, if the borough can do it on their own and not bother anybody, that's the best way to do it, to get it done expediently. Otherwise, it'll drag out and God forbid something should happen, there's a problem.
So the tree is blocking the view of the light?
The vegetation, I don't know if it's a tree or what have you. I didn't go and honestly look at it that closely when I was out there. I just noticed that the, there was a blockage from the site, for a site distance, from the traveling public coming down, outgoing out of South River on that side. The other side was clear.
Okay.
If you keep me appraised down that side.
I'll reach out to the business administrator, see if I can get them to trim the trees or notify the people with their code enforcement to have the owners trim the trees, one way or the other.
The reason why I'm saying this is because I have an obligation now to make a report and I will. So if you can give me your information, then, you know, within a reasonable, a few days at least, then at least I'll be able to start making the report and follow through.
I'll reply back to you. I'll speak to East Brunswick. If you're not on vacation, I'll speak to the administrator tomorrow.
Okay, okay, and if they have any questions, they can give me a call.
Of course.
Thank you very much.
Okay, that's all. Anyone else on third call?
Make a motion to close public?
Is it snowing? Motion by Mr. Seula, seconded by Mr. Olivera. All in favor?
Aye.
All against? The ayes have it. Do us for a loop there, Housman. There is no mayoral appointments. We go on to consent resolutions.
Whereas Resolution 2023-01 authorizes the Borough Council to utilize a consent agenda to adopt various resolutions of a routine and non-controversial nature at one time. Now therefore be it and is hereby resolved that the below listed resolutions are hereby adopted by the Borough Council in whole as if the same were individually acted upon. Consent Resolutions 2023-258 to 2023-273. 258 authorized the requisition of funds for payment to the custodian of school monies. 259 insertion of any special item of revenue in the budget. 260 resolution authorizing salaries for a non-union employee. 261 approval of a special events permit to the Portuguese Club to be held on September 3 of 2023. 262 appoint Hunter Stephens as cadet for the South River Fire Department. 263 granting renewal of ABC license from July 1, 2023 to June 30 of 2024. 264 authorize certain utility refunds. 265 resolution authorizing the promotion of Bernard Maciel to lieutenant in the police department. 266 property tax refund for a total disabled veteran. 267 approval of a special events permit for the, for a Mexican flag raising event to be held on September 10, 2023. 268 accept July 31, 2023 regular meeting minutes. 269 authorize the bills and claims list. 270 authorizing pay estimate number four and closeout change order to Allied Construction Group Incorporated. 271 authorizing person-to-person transfer application of plenary retail consumption license. 272 approval of a special events permit for a Honduran flag raising event to be held on September 30 of 2023. 273 resolution authorizing a block party.
Your pleasure on the resolutions?
Oh, the resolutions.
Resolutions have been moved by Mrs. Ballas, seconded by Mr. Seula. Role call?
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gindi?
Yes, with the abstention to 262 as well as 269, which is the bills. 23-02223, 02105, 02200, 02199, and 01253.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes, with an abstention to Resolution 261 and 268.
Council President Seula?
Yes, with the abstention of Resolution 262 and on 269 would be 23-02424, 02223, 02425, 02422, 02423, 02200, 02199, 01253, 02105, and 02421.
Then resolutions have been voted on and have been accepted. There's no new business. We are going to go into the governing body comments and then we're going to break for executive session. So for all intents purposes, the meeting will end. We're not taking any action afterwards. We'll simply step out after the closed session and adjourn the meeting. Let's have a get over there. How about if we get over there, Samara?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank once again these group of kids and family members that came out this evening. I know Brenda's been a large community leader from the Mexican community as well as to all Hispanics. She helps out wherever she can and I thank her for coming out on behalf of the Barbosa family. As you can see, a lot of these kids have been mourning for the last month and it's been very difficult. You see them together all the time, helping out this family get over a big tragedy. I also want to mention Brenda had said to me earlier, if we remember the gentleman that passed away, I believe it was last year, riding his bike to work, 65 years old, member of this community as well. So there is a lot of, a lot of people here trying to really come together as a community and give more awareness to the people who drive, the people who ride. I've been getting residents reaching out to me about lots of great ideas. I had a resident reach out to me and I did, I spoke with one of our fellow officers about a campaign that Toms River does. It's called Operation Brain Freeze. And what do they do? Police officers pull over children who are riding their bikes with their helmets and they give them a summons to go for ice cream. So it kind of shows the community that, hey, you're doing a good job. Hey, we're not only pulling you over for bad things, you know, we see that you do good things too. And it really gives more awareness to bike safety and, and being more aware of all these kids that are out here on the, on the streets, so. I want to thank everybody that's reached out to me regardless. Thank Brenda again. We do think constantly about, you know, the man who passed away on his bike. We think about Brian. We think about the woman that not too long ago got hit walking in the morning. You know, things happen, they're accidents, but we do need to, as a community, come together and really come out with a campaign. And I'm glad that the whole community comes together and brings stuff up like this. So hopefully, after you guys meet with the police department and, and come up with something, you know, the community is here and we can back up everyone and really get involved with things like this. Like, we know school's right around the corner. Kids are going to start going to school. My kid wants to walk to school. I don't know why. I hated walking to school, but they, you know, they're excited for these new chapters in life and we really have to be careful. I live on Main Street. If I could tell you the amount of times I see accidents right in front of me. If I could tell you the amount of times I see accidents right in front of me, it is scary. It is, you know, but like, like we know, more people are driving, more people are less aware of what's around them and, and people suffer the consequences. And we want this to not be a normal thing. We want this to slow down. And I know, um, you know, the federal government has that safe routes for everyone that has grants. Maybe we should continue to look into that. I know the county was looking into stuff like that. Um, maybe we should be pushing for the county to include us with their, uh, safe routes for everyone grants and, you know, color up the streets with, uh, crosswalks so that people really look at it and, and slow down. Other than that, I just want everyone to have a good end of their summer. I hope that, um, the kids start off the school year good and we'll be back here on September twelfth. Did we change that meeting just because of the September eleventh thing? Cause we don't know how long it'll take, is that why?
Yes.
Okay, and then my last question was, uh, I know the chief, the fire chief isn't here. Did we get an answer as to what was the cause of the fire? Nothing?
Which, which fire?
Herman Street one.
The Herman Street.
Yeah, we haven't heard anything yet.
Okay, cause he had said that he would try to find out for this meeting. I was just wondering if we got anything.
Yeah.
He's still waiting for some reports to come in.
Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
And thank you for translating. That was, uh, good. You know, a lot of it is obeying the law. That's, that's part of the problem. You can put as many signs as you want, but if the individual is not going to obey the law, you know, what happened down on Darrell and, uh, Colfax ran a stop sign. You can paint as many signs, you can have them blinking all you want, but if people aren't gonna stop, that's why you have accidents. But, uh, yes, anything to remind people to think, uh, would be welcome for that. I know that we do, whenever the, uh, federal programs come for safe routes and all that, we do look into it, but a lot of times we just, we don't fit into that right category, so. But we'll keep trying. Mr. Olivera?
Um, just wanna echo Councilwoman Mara's comments, uh, to the Barbosa family. Thank you guys for coming. It's a shame that we have to meet under these circumstances here and it couldn't be on something better. But it's a beautiful thing to advocate and try to do something special for, in honor of Brian's memory. As a community, we're rallying around an individual. Um, you know, you mentioned Nando's father on OBT. We should be rallying around good things and not necessarily tragic things. And I think it's important that we do whatever we can as a council, as a community, to come together to honor Brian, honor the family in any way that we can. But signage, I don't know, has there been signs purchased for, for, like, slowdown for Brian signs? Do we know?
Well, no, they're gonna have a discussion with the police department first too.
Well, listen, in honor of Brian, I would like to help out, my family and I. I will donate my month's salary for council and I will help buy signs. So, let's get them all over town. If that's something that's allowable, chief, you know, I, I wanna help. Whatever we can do as a community to rally around him, let's, let's get it started. All right? So, I know you're, I'll speak to Ms. Mara. She can give you my contact information. I'll be more than happy to help out in any way I can. All right? I know we're not gonna be here for nine-eleven. Just wanna remind everyone, uh, if you're able to, Daly's Pond, we can honor, um, everyone that lost their life in, in a tragic event. Please come out. The fire department always has a great ceremony as well, uh, to honor those individuals. And again, as a community, it's a beautiful thing to see people come and advocate. Usually our meetings, there's two or three people here and it's always the same individuals. It was nice seeing, you know, a room full of different faces. But again, let's not make it on events that are tragedies and events that could be, you know, easily corrected by just doing the right thing and following the law. So, with that, Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you. Council President?
Oh, thank you. I was just gonna pick up where Jason left off about the nine-eleven. Uh, fire department ceremonies will be right after the Daly Pond's nine-eleven memorial services. So, everybody's invited to come back to Station One on Jackson Street, uh, for those services. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ballas.
Um, again, we'll see everyone on the, uh, the eleventh. And as to school opening on the seventh, I, I have the rare opportunity to watch everybody go to school because I live right by there. And it's true that, that not only do the people driving have to be careful, but the people dropping off have to be careful. It's a two-way, literally a two-way street. Both have to be aware of everyone there. I, I'd hate to see, um, a tragedy there as, as you had. And I'm sorry for your loss. And whatever we can do here to help you, we're here for you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Ballas. Mr. Gindi?
Thank you. I wanna thank, first of all, um, Parks and Rec, the end of summer program was a success. The VFW had the Military Legends Concert. It was a great turnout. Uh, the water issue, till today, we still get complaints. I know complaints have been going on since twenty-fifteen. I still have records showing that people keep coming and complaining. Believe me when I tell you, when you're on social media and you're talking about it, we don't know where you're at. You need to call it in. Call in the complaint. And I don't care how many times you call it, you call it in and we'll have somebody out there. Uh, National Aid Out, uh, great job. Um, Mr. Zangai unfortunately missed the first part of the report, so I had a question to you about Daly's Pond. I know that the equipment has come in. Uh, when are we looking to install it?
Uh, two weeks ago, I got an email that the equipment's in, they're ready to install it, but the pour-in play, that surface is on backorder. So, they, this was on August, I think, eighth or ninth. They believe it might take four weeks. So, we're hoping in a couple of weeks that'll come in and then they'll do the whole project.
All right, now, the other question I had for you was, I know that at the last council meeting, I spoke about what the town has already paid into Daly's Pond. Uh, the numbers are significant. Has the county given us anything for that yet?
No.
No, all right. When they do, and if Daly's Pond is satisfied by then or before then, could that money be put into another park?
I'd have to see what the county says. You know, it's their grant, so if they let us use it on any parks, then yes. If it says Daly's Park only, it's gotta be used for Daly's Park. But there's still other work we need to do at Daly's Park, so we can use it for that also.
Okay.
Cameras and fences.
All right. Uh, to Mr. Barbosa, Mrs. Barbosa, I know how much, uh, your son meant to my nephew and all of his friends. Ever since the accident, I've had the opportunity to reach out to the county. Mr. Rios, John Carl, uh, met up with or spoke to the chief. We are working on a program to help out with these, uh, problems of these streets. We have not quit. We're not gonna quit. We're gonna continue. We're gonna make sure with the problems resolved the proper way. Whether it's road rumblers, flashing lights, we are gonna get this thing done. Uh, so you know, you already have my support. So, if you ever need anything, feel free to reach out to me. Thank you. That's all I have for today.
Okay, thank you. And thank you again for coming. You know, it's, uh, it's, there's not enough, uh, education. There's not enough, uh, warnings to tell people, to remind them about, you know, safety first when you're driving. It's got to be done and constantly be reminded about. So, we thank you again for coming. Past things, uh, great fireworks display. Thank you to all who helped with that VFW concert. Uh, I was there for a little while. It looked like, uh, as I was leaving at six o'clock, more and more people were coming. Looked like they had a very good crowd there. Again, try something new every year. It'll work out, uh, although I think, uh, next time they do it, they're gonna switch the stage around to, uh, have the music played towards cerebral. There's some complaints about the, uh, the music right next door in the, uh, trailer park there. But again, try it, tweak it, it'll work better next time. Uh, Happy Labor Day is coming up. School is coming up. Uh, you know, enjoy the holiday and remember why we have the holiday, uh, to celebrate, uh, those that work so very hard to keep this country going. Uh, school's opening on the seventh and then the following weekend, there is lots to do in this town. Uh, the Fido Lodge is having a car show on the ninth. On the tenth, the Union Baptist Church is celebrating its ninety-second birthday. There's a flag raising, uh, for the Mexican, uh, people. And St. Mary's is having its picnic, all within two hours of each other. It's gonna be really hopping that, that's what your mayor is gonna be doing. And of course, on a more serious note, uh, our commemoration of September eleventh. We're one of the few towns that continue to do that. Usually it's a nice crowd. Hopefully the weather will be good. Uh, you are invited, it begins at six-thirty. It's done by seven, then we go down to, uh, the fire station. Uh, there's a service over there. So, uh, again, a chance for the town to come together, uh, no matter who you are, uh, race, creed, color, sex, political party, doesn't matter. Uh, come out, remember, do something together for all of us. If there's nothing else to come before us, we are gonna go into executive session. So, the meeting will essentially come to an end. We will come out afterwards and officially end it, but if there's nothing, may I have the resolution?
Resolution twenty-two-three-two-seventy-four, whereas Section Eight of Chapter Two Thirty-One Public Law of nineteen-seventy-five permits the exclusion of the general public from a meeting of the governing body under certain circumstances. And whereas the mayor and council of the borough South River are of the opinion such circumstances presently exist, now therefore bein', and is hereby resolved by the mayor and council of the borough South River and the county of Middlesex of the state of New Jersey, that the public be excluded upon the here and after specific subject matter and that such subject matter to be so discussed is as follows. Litigation, Parks and Recreation. Be a further resolved that such record of the above discussion will made public when confidentiality is no longer required.
Okay, your pleasure on the resolution. Resolution by Mr. Gindi, seconded by Mrs. Ballas. Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas? Councilman Gindi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
Council President Seula?
Yes.
Okay, we now go into closed session. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for coming.
Second.
Motion has been made to open by Mr. Gindi, seconded by Mrs. Ballas.